The Norfolk City Council is now in session. This meeting is necessary for the council to continue operations of the city and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities, and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with City of Norfolk Ordinance 47967 as authorized by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1413 and will be conducted telephonically and electronically. Notice of this meeting was given to the public on May 22, 2020, in the Virginian Pallet. An electronic copy of the agenda was posted on the city's website, May 21, 2020. Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. McClellan? Mrs. McClellan?
She said here.
Mr. Riddick? Mr. Riddick? Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Alexander?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick? Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Tonight, we have one public hearing and no consent agenda items and non-regular agenda items. There is no new business tonight. To address the council, you should have registered to speak prior to 7:00, in this case, 5:00 PM. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
First public hearing, sir.
PH1.
Public hearing 1 is a matter of schedule this day pursuant to state law to hear comments authorizing the conveyance to Quality Holdings II LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 3138 Kansas Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Quality Holdings II LLC of that certain parcel of property located at 3138 Kansas Avenue in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the release of the city's right of reverter upon certain conditions. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Abstain. Abstain PH1. I'm abstaining.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick? Mr. Riddick? Mr. Riddick?
So let's pause for a minute. Really, can you call Mr. Riddick for sure? We didn't lose him?
Hey, he's got his mute on, according to the...
Now he does.
He's there?
Mr. Riddick?
He's muted.
He keeps muting.
No, I mean...
He keeps muting it.
Now ask him.
Mr. Riddick?
I can't hear me.
Yes, sir. We can hear you just like that. Is that an "aye"? Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Hi.
Mr. Thomas? Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R1?
Certainly, R1 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 47636 so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of funds up to the sum of $21,178,304 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Accounts as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Care Act for coronavirus relief funds.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
He doesn't show. He doesn't show muted.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes, we hear you.
Yes, sir. We can. We can hear you. Okay. Uh, okay.
My question is, what are some of the things these funds to be used for?
Dr. Fowler or Mr. Schumpert?
Yeah, sir. Um, we are working with the staff councilmen to evaluate all the various expenses that are eligible under the act. Um, right now, there isn't a lot of guidance from the federal government on explicit uses, but we are working forward with all of our staff and all the departments to evaluate every aspect of the city that is being altered or changed in such a manner that is necessary for social distancing and other, you know, mitigation of the COVID pandemic. And so pretty much all of those are eligible. Um, and the only caveat is, uh, the one big caveat is it cannot be items that were already budgeted for by the city. So it has to be sort of new items that came across as a result of the pandemic.
Uh, one of the reasons I asked, and I asked this early on, uh, our frontline, um, workers like sanitation workers who do their trash uh, every, uh, every week. And I know towards the end of the year, you know, I think the budget costs, uh, a bonus for some workers. But can we use some of this money to, uh, to give the sanitation workers now?
Um, a bonus is one of the items that is expressly prohibited. But if they needed protective gear, uh, if our sanitation workers needed, uh, PPE, then that would qualify or, uh, if it was related to the pandemic, but, um, uh, the federal government has prohibited bonuses. But it also allows grants to businesses that were disrupted. And so I think that what we'll have to do is as we flush the items out, is come back to you like we do in the land acquisition fund and get authorization for the expenditure.
Okay, I will, uh...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smigel?
Yeah, and, um, just to let everybody know, I'm, uh, serving on a statewide task force for local governments. I'll be representing the Hampton Roads area on this task force. And we had our first call today about this very issue of how to spend this money. Uh, right now, there are no plans in Congress to give localities any flexibility with this money at all. Uh, there was an attempt, but it's probably not going to happen. There is new legislation today that looks like there's going to be a compromise on the Senate side to give more money to localities that could be used to help with offsetting deficits. But this money cannot be used, uh, at all to fill our deficit on that. There are some creative things that localities are doing across, um, the, the country. We're working with NLC. I'm sure, um, both Mamie and Angela have also heard and Andrea involvement in NLC. Um, and I know the city manager, we, we spoke earlier. We had our first call and it's interesting what some localities are trying to get creative with using this money because you really, for us, we can't spend $22 million on PPE. It's just, uh, there's not enough PPE available for us to spend it on. Uh, but there are some, uh, creative things that can be done that could help offset that. And also, how do you give it to local, uh, businesses and organizations? How can you use that funding and as well as school buses? I think Mr. Thomas, uh, mentioned purchasing more school buses for schools as a, as an idea. So there, there's, everybody's going to be sharing this and VML is going to be, um, helping to lead this conversation across the state with sharing information. And we know that if all localities are kind of working together with this, that it's an expense, then the federal government would have a hard time, uh, declining, uh, um, you know, and saying no to asking to come back and take that money later. The Virginia, just to let you know, the Virginia government is not giving any guidance to localities at all. In fact, Secretary Lane said they are not going to do that. Uh, and so it is up to the localities of Virginia to figure the, uh, FAQ and the allowable expenses on this. Uh, but I did want to share that with everybody and I'll be working with Chip to get ideas from him, to share with other localities and as I get information. Uh, they're working very hard out in southwest Virginia on getting creative on how to spend, uh, these funds. And there may be some really great ideas we hear from and I'll, I'll be able to share those with, uh, Chip and staff and then with you as I hear from it, uh, about it. But I...
Thank you. Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you.
R2?
R2 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 47636 so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of grant funds up to the sum of $2,653,164 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant as authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Care Act for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, in these last two books, we have about $27 million. How do we get this money to the poor people in the city? I'm just not satisfied with, you know, all of the things that we could do. Uh, and we just need to be bold and get something to the poor people. You know, what happens when the schools open and, uh, they have to do it from home? The little kids that don't have computers at home, what do we do? We just taking this money and rolling it up and doing some of everything with it as opposed to helping poor people?
Can I answer, uh, Mr. Riddick real quick on the school system side? The, um, school system received their own set of money, although some of the money that we receive can also be used towards the school system. But the school system just purchased 2,000 T-Mobile Hot Spots that they are giving out to students who don't have internet access at home. And it's my understanding that every school is, uh, they are purchasing Chromebook, uh, carts for schools to be able to get almost every school in Norfolk on a one-to-one so that when students return, they'll be able to give computers to every single student. They already have, they've given out thousands of computers across the district in the last couple of weeks, but they've purchased enough, I believe, or they're purchasing enough to be able to give every student a, their own Chromebook when school resumes.
Okay. Thanks, Tommy.
Tommy, can I, can I also jump in though? I think that's great that MPS is doing that, but Mr. Riddick, to your point, it's not just about the school kids. We, digital divide, people can't telework. They can't go see their doctor via telemedicine if they don't have internet access. So, I mean, I think we need to be creative and think about broadband access throughout the whole city, not just specific and only limited to our, our, our schoolchildren. I think they should be our priority, but I think we need to be very creative about these funds. And to Bernard's point, I like the idea of coming back to us for some sort of approval or appropriation for these funds. We're basically saying at this point, we're taking the money, but I do agree, Mr. Riddick, that we need to have a little bit of oversight into what that is.
I think so. Thank you so much.
Mr. Riddick, how do you vote, sir?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
And I, just to add to Andrea's point, um, every single one of our rec centers and libraries should have wireless access. So even if somebody wanted to sit in the parking lot outside of one of those buildings and access it, they should be able to do it. I, I still can't believe that our rec centers don't have, uh, wireless access points, but hopefully this is something that we can spend that money on as well, particularly if our rec centers have to become daycare centers when we do go back to school. If we're not going back 100%, um, there, those rec centers will need access. If these kids have Chromebooks, uh, with them to be able to do their schoolwork, we'll have to have points for them. But, uh, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R3?
R3 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 47636 so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of grant funds up to the sum of $193,322.38 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Care Provider Act funds for Norfolk Fire Rescue COVID-19 Response.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Uh, what, what are we doing for the residents that are trying to be in transition over in our public housing communities? Are we, are we doing anything for those, uh, individuals trying to be in tran- transition?
If you're referring to those who are in Tyre Water Gardens, yes. Um, we are still working with them on a very voluntary basis for anyone who is interested in looking for, uh, work, which is a little difficult now, but there are still people who are interested in looking, um, for work. There are also folks who are still working with their coaches in terms of looking for housing and we are still working with them. The People First Team is still working with residents. As a matter of fact, I want to say we had like our third homeowner, if I'm not mistaken, who came from Tyre Water Gardens in the last give or take 30 days, um, to complete the process and close on their home. And so we are working with individuals who are interested in their transition out of public housing. But more so than that, we are working with the families and, and forgive me because I don't have the number on the top, off the top of my head, but we're also working with the families who have already transitioned because you transition out of public housing and everything is great and then this happens and everything is not great. And so we, our, our People First Team is helping them to navigate those situ- those, um, agencies that are giving forbearances, those agencies that are delaying, uh, shut-off notices and things of that nature, um, helping them to make sure that they're on track with the information that they need from the public schools. So we are still working with our public housing residents through all of this. No, no evictions, no mandatory evictions, nobody's been put out. But if people are interested in moving and they're interested in work and moving forward and, and still continuing to explore their options, we are still working with them.
Uh, Angela, have we gotten any money from HUD, any money?
I cannot answer that question, Mr. Riddick. I can get an answer for you and send it back out, but I cannot answer that question. What I can tell you is, is the preliminary work that we are already budgeted to do in terms of infrastructure is on schedule. And that is to keep us, you know, on par with our, our current demolition schedule, um, as we go through other situations, but I cannot answer that question directly.
Okay. And if you do me a favor, when you get back to me, let me know if we have a developer. I know this guy, these, the Brenshaw people are around, but I don't know that, uh, that they are developers. So you could call me back before they say offline and let me know about that.
They are the master developer. Brenshaw is the master developer. And, you know, having local conversations has been a little bit, uh, you know, difficult because of their, their travel ban started in March. But they are the, um, they're, our contracts and everything with HUD have them listed as the master developer on the, on the, um, brick and mortar side.
Okay. We'll talk about that a little later too. Thank you so much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R4?
R4 is a resolution proving the terms and conditions of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement by and among the cities of Chesapeake, Franklin, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, McCotheam, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, Williamsburg, the county of James City, the sheriffs of the counties of Akimak, Gloucester, Isle of Wight, Northampton, Surrey, and York, and the towns of Smithfield and Windsor. Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R5?
R5 is a resolution in support of RF Terminal Inc. application for the receipt of industrial access railroad track funds from the Commonwealth Department of Rail and Public Transportation. Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R6?
R6 is an ordinance amending the FY 2020 Annual Appropriations Ordinance Number 47636 so as to accept, appropriate, and authorize the expenditure of grant funds of up to the sum of $5,000 from the National League of Cities for the census outreach to historically undercounted and hard-to-count communities. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
I vote aye, but I would like to ask this if I could. When we have a work session in the near future, Tommy and Angela and administration, can we get an update of where we are in the census and the impact that COVID has had on that and what we need to do to make sure that we are still successful with the census moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Graves?
So I want to take a minute just to thank the administration and thank, um, Adisa and his team and working with Tommy, um, to get this, uh, grant processed. I think we thought we weren't going to get it and then we got it. And so I think it's really cool that, um, the work that we're doing in Norfolk is recognized by the National League of Cities. And so I just want to say thank you and I'm real excited. I'm not really sure how outreach is going to look right now. I don't think any of us are and that's a challenge for other colleagues that I have in other localities on city council. How does that outreach look? But, um, we've got brilliant minds at the table and we've got creative minds at the table, so I know we'll figure something out. So thank you and I vote aye.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Just know, uh, Mamie and I were sitting in, uh, a giant workshop with, uh, I think there's like 4,000 people in there in DC and they put the big, put on the big board that they were giving out these grants. And Mamie and I looked at each other and like, we're going to get one of those from Norfolk. And, uh, we did, so thank you, um, Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Graves and our staff for applying for that. And hopefully we can do something good. I think we talked about possibly even buying some iPads with those, um, so we can go around in communities and mobile, uh, uh, register people for the census. So we, we've talked about a few ways of using that money. But we do need to update Norfolk was ahead of, um, the state at one time, but I think we fell behind. So we, we've got some work to do. And I think on every single city announcement that goes out from this point forward, Chip, uh, we need to remind our citizens that the census is still happening and it was extended till August, but, uh, until we can hit doors, we still need people to be able to, um, fill it out online. Uh, and, and we have to get that message out through all of our, our networks and our outlets. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. R7?
R7 is an ordinance revoking support and approval of the transfer of certain property located at Harbor Park in the city of Norfolk to the United States of America in trust for the benefit of the Pawlunkey Indian Tribe.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance twice and adopt with the effective date. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Mrs. McClellan?
I just want to thank the mayor and the staff for making this happen. This is what we asked originally to have, uh, the ordinance from September regarding the casino cleaned up. Um, and this essentially takes off the table the opportunity for this land to be turned into a sovereign nation, um, and allows, if the citizens of Norfolk vote in November on the referendum, uh, allows the city to still have control, uh, taxation, uh, and, uh, control over that land. So I appreciate the ability to do that and I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye. Uh, before we call R8, I want, uh, uh, administration, maybe Dr. Fowler and/or Jared, uh, to give us, uh, a refresh, um, before we take up R8. Mr. Chark?
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, uh, Council. So I want to talk about R8 real quick and, uh, where we are with that and what the process looks like going forward. Um, so as you know, um, you know, the casino gaming legislation passed the General Assembly, um, this past year. Um, as part of that, um, it, it outlined a process by which, um, the, the locality applies to the General Assembly, um, to, um, become eligible for a casino. So I'll quickly talk about that. So where we are now, um, the developer, um, believes a $500 million development is likely the size project that he'll be constructing. Remember, the state, um, put a $300 million minimum requirement on a resort casino development. It's currently anticipated at 3,000 slots, 150 table games, 300 rooms for a hotel. Um, it still includes a world-class spa and pool and as well as 3,500 parking spaces. Flip to the next slide.
Ken's controlling. You got it.
All right. Um, so as part of the application to the, to the Commonwealth, um, we have to formally identify an operator, um, for the casino. And that's what R8 does. And so the preferred operating criteria, um, the state, um, asks that we consider the following nine items as we identify our operator and submit that in an application to the state. One of the, the things that are not included here in the nine that I want to highlight is this, the act further requires that we give preference, um, preferred consideration to an operator who is a, um, uh, Indian tribe in Virginia. And so, um, that really emphasizes Pawlunkey Tribe. We've been working with them, as you know, for several years. They've got an option agreement on the land. Um, but these are the preferred, uh, operating criteria that will be submitted to the state as part of our proposed, um, package. So the next steps, um, if council approves of, of R8, um, it'll select the Pawlunkey Tribe as our preferred operating partner. Um, we'll submit that to the lottery board for review by, uh, June 1st. Uh, the operator, um, then must be approved to proceed for a referendum. So they go through a state process, um, and then there'll be a referendum in November, um, this year. So the key dates there, June 1st, uh, submit preferred operators to lottery. Lottery then has 45 days to respond to that application. Um, no later than July 24th, um, we submit to the circuit court to, um, uh, order the, um, to place, um, it on a referendum, um, that would be in November. So Bernard, if I missed anything or need to clarify anything?
I would just add the obvious, probably what Jared forgot to mention it, uh, that we are required to consider and you couldn't do otherwise. We have a development agreement for the sale of approximately 14 acres and obligations under it to be supportive. So it's one of the obvious factors that must be considered. Uh, and so that this information is provided to you, but the General Assembly really tires our hands with the preference to, uh, a tribe that has federal gambling rights and a, and a developer that we have a contract with. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, this is the legislated process and that obvious, uh, um, contract is one of the elements you ought to consider and what we'll also provide to the lottery board who does the preliminary review. one of the elements you ought to consider, and what we'll also provide to the lottery board who does the preliminary review.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. McClellan?
On the, uh, second bullet point regarding the lottery review, I believe it's a forty-five-day period, will that information then be made, uh, available to the public prior to the, uh, potential referendum on election day?
I, I, I think the majority of it will. Um, to the extent that it includes confidential financial propriety records, that may well be a- accepted. Um, but the majority of the information, all of what we have tonight and what we'll be sending, i- is available to the public that, uh, under the Freedom of Information Act or just on our own initiative.
So ju- I mean, just to confirm, that's a, an outside agency that's gonna be doing a review of the financial and business acumen of this potential partner?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
The, the General Assembly designated the lottery board, uh, a- as its agency to be the operator, administrator, uh, for, uh, these casinos and gambling in Virginia. So the lottery board, uh, its staff will undertake that analysis that you described.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Smigel?
A, a question for the city attorney?
Yes.
Um, under the, this new way of virtually meeting, uh, ha- are closed sessions allowed to happen? I, I'm sorry if I didn't, I missed that.
Uh, yes, they are. That, that, um, that they're permitted under, um, the leg- enabling legislation and our ordinance. Um, so that, that they're permitted, and, and I'd have to ask Ken or others about the logistics. He says yes, that we'd be able to go from an open meeting into a closed session, uh, wh- where it's secure. Yes.
Okay, I just, uh, um, without giving, without going any further, I just think that it might be necessary for us to have a, a closed session meeting regarding this, uh, matter a- after we're done voting on it. I, I'm, I'm thinking we can't do it today, but I, maybe at our next meeting, I think we need to have a discussion about, uh, about casino.
Yeah. Matt, Matt, when Tom is finished, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay. Mr. Smigel?
Okay.
Yeah, did, is, is that something that we could do sooner than later?
And it's all right, Mr. Smigel. I, I'll call you and go over the qualifying purpose and, and then bring it to the next agenda meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, you know, uh, I, I tried to send everyone a copy of an article, I guess in the Washington Post, where you had at least seven or eight tribal casinos that were being affected by this virus. And I guess a question that I, we could talk about maybe in closed session. What happens if we have a second or third wave of this virus? And what impact would that have on construction and, you know, so? It's, it's, we're in a different time now, and, uh, it's not the city of Norfolk's fault they're in this time. But I think we need to realize that, uh, things have changed, so, okay.
Mr. Riddick, I can tell you from a real estate perspective, construction has not changed.
But you know, uh, I kinda believe instead of putting, uh, a casino there, we should take that property and put, uh, great big condos with boat slips. So anyway, that's just me, as usual.
Okay, Chuck, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Bull?
Certainly. We have a resolution for R eight, which is a resolution selecting a preferred casino gaming operator pursuant to chapter forty-one of Title fifty-eight point one of the Code of Virginia. Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Uh, again, I wanna, um, thank everybody for being in a position where we have more information, uh, for the citizens to decide, and I hope that whatever the lottery board review, um, comes out with, that, that is made available to the citizens and, and recognize that November third is important, and people need to pay attention and do their own homework. I think in some ways, uh, while I've not always been a big fan of casinos, I recognize the potential for jobs and revenue to the city and maybe some funds for our schools, but I am also still remain concerned about the casino's effect on our, our local businesses, our local restaurants and hotels, which are suffering more now than ever. Uh, but that said, uh, I vote aye, and I appreciate everybody's patience with me through this process. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, I've been doing a lot of thinking about this, and out of five, um, casinos authorized by the, uh, state, you know, what's gonna make Norfolk a, a destination? And, uh, I'm really going south on this. I vote no.
Thank you. Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, R nine?
Yeah, there's a, a motion to continue R nine to June ninth?
The motion is to continue R nine until June ninth. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
We are on the two-yard line with this C-PACE legislation, and we will do it over, but we had to go through, I think we have to continue this, uh, uh, Mr. Pishko, because of a state requirement for notification. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, that, um, we were late in realizing that it requires the advertisement for a public hearing, uh, before its passage, which we omitted for tonight's meeting, so he, yes, I'm sorry about that.
That, that's okay. We're so close. We're gonna get it done, um, and excited to bring this back in June. So I vote aye on the continuance and can't wait for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Dr. Alexander?
Aye.
One additional item, sir.
Mr. Bull, go right on.
R ten is a resolution appointing Christina Tally to the Norfolk Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees for a certain term. Adopt the resolution. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Graves?
Aye.
Mrs. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander?
Aye.